All right, I'm going to call our budget hearing to order. We have one item and it is presentation of the proposed 2017-18 budget. Vicki?
This budget hearing is to discuss how we're going to use the debt mills and the operating mills that we levy on our properties within the district. First, we'll talk about the debt fund. The total taxable value of all the properties in the district is $500 million and the levy need to pay our debt mills is 5.5 mills this year. The revenue generated from that is $2.7 million and our debt expenditures, which is our bond payments, is $2.6 million. In the next few years, we'll see a gradual decrease in our debt levy. That's from the refunding of the bonds, so as that is implemented, we will start to see some decreases in the mills. And also, as the taxable value of the properties go up, that also increases our revenue and decreases our levy that we'll need to pay the bills. On the general fund side, the budget challenges that we have for 2017-18 is the declining enrollment, our graduating classes that aren't larger than our incoming kindergarten classes, and the ability of the district to right-size itself due to those changes in our enrollment. The state revenue assumptions are our state revenues are projected based on our 2017 foundation allowance of $7,511 plus the $120 for the minimum foundation districts, which we are one, for a total of $7,631 per pupil. That's much better. Now I'll step back just a smidge. The blended count is roughly $1,379. And this year, we're going to have a transfer from food service of $20,000. All grant revenues are relatively stable, although we anticipate in the future years that our Title I and Title II, especially Title II, will be either phased out or significantly reduced. And our at-risk, we'll most likely see an increase that will be adjusted in our amendment in our budget this year, next 2018. Our total revenue, local revenue of the 18 mills generates $2,600,000 and we levy that on the non-homestead property. Our other local revenues, which are pay-to-participate, gate receipts, childcare, preschool, those are about $400,000. State aid foundation is $9.1 million and other state aid, which is our GSRP grant, is $239,000. Federal grants and other include our Title I, Title II, and IDEA funds. So our total budgeted revenues for 2018 is $13.4 million. So our total revenue per pupil is $9,764. You can see on the pie chart here, this represents how much we rely on state revenues to operate. So any fluctuations that we have from the state can significantly impact our budget. Now, our foundation grant, our projected student FTE is $1,379. That's what we're projecting our budget on. And the projected per-pupil foundation grant is $7,631 for a total foundation grant of Minus what the 18 mills generates on the non-homestead properties of $2.6 million and we have the state share of $7.8 million. Some of our expenditure assumptions are that we've made some staff reductions, including teaching positions. The district share of health insurance has increased with the hard cap increase of 3.3%. We had REA contract wage and benefit implementation, so that is the half-step in the return of furlough day. And then, we also have a full-time business manager position that's in the budget this year. Also, the math and science curriculum and instructional materials are being purchased this year. So our expenditures are broken down into salaries and benefits, which is $10.8 million. Purchased services, which is our legal fees, audit services, custodial contracts, workshops, conferences, building and maintenance repairs of $1.6 million, supplies of $700,000, capital outlay of $39,388, and other payments are our energy bond payments of $307,000 for total expenditures of $13.6 million. And on this pie chart, you can see the breakdown of how our expenditures look. And as you'll notice, 80 percent of our expenditures are in salaries and wages. And that's typical of every school district in the state. So, in the end, the fund equity with our revenue of $13.4 million and our expenditures of $13.6 million, we have a shortfall of $181,807. We're projecting that our fund equity on June 30th will be $610,000 or 4.5 percent of the total revenues. And if you have any questions, I can take those away.
And that concludes our budget hearing at 6:39. We are adjourned for our regular meeting at 7:00. Hey, I'm going to call our regular board of education meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our mission statement. Sarah?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Kyle?
Is this roll call? Here.
Yes.
Here.
Chris?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
I am here and Dave is absent without us.
Okay, thank you. Next, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented.
We're in a hurry, right?
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Kyle then Sarah?
Yep.
Nope. Ryan then Sarah.
Oh, was Ryan? Okay, sorry. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Brian?
I'd like to introduce Tammy Shay, who is here as the business director, Director of Business and Management Services. She is on the agenda to be hired replacing Vicki Lasky, whose last day is June 30th. So, congratulations Tammy Shay.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here tonight. I want to thank you for the opportunity to work and be of service for Richmond Community Schools. I'm excited to get to know staff and the team here at Richmond. I also look forward to getting to know the community as a whole, staff, parents, teachers, students as well. So I'm very excited to be here.
Very good. Welcome. Excited to have you.
I'd also like to recognize, we've had some retirements as well as some resignations. I'd like to recognize Carol Rumbaugh, who is retiring as the alternative online coordinator. She's been in the district for 37 years. Hopefully, at a future meeting, we'll be able to recognize her. This is very difficult for her because she's got so much time invested in this school year. I'd also like to report, we have two resignations, Mr. Murphy, a high school teacher, as well as Mrs. Led, excuse me, girls' track coach. She has her presentation.
Thank you. And we are going to try to convince Carol to come maybe in August so that we can...
Do that. Yeah, I wish she does.
Yes, yes.
For sure. It's important.
This is too early.
Yeah, it'd just be too soon. Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is our presentation. We have John Moore, City Manager from the City of Richmond regarding a public utility easement request.
Thank you. Good evening. As Margaret mentioned, I'm John Moore, the City Manager. This is Jim Getzinger, our Public Service Director, and we're here tonight to make a presentation on a request that the city made regarding the lift station, sanitary sewer lift station that's in front of the middle school and a potential easement that we've requested from the school. The city is requesting a sanitary sewer easement of 25 feet along the western and a portion of the southern school property line. And that would be to help us install a gravity-fed system and the removal of the lift station that services the middle school and also Stecker Lane at this point. The presentation, we'll try to keep it brief. We know you're pretty close to your summer break here, but Jim's going to go over kind of just a little bit about what a lift station is and the easement request, and then I'll kind of wrap up the presentation after he gets through that.
Hi, I appreciate your time. Like John said, we thought it'd be good to explain really what sewer system is and lift station, so it's clear what we're looking to do. Generally speaking, sanitary sewers are really a gravity system, meaning the pipe points downhill and you use the power of gravity to go from your house, the upstream end, to the downstream end, which is where the wastewater treatment plant. But in some cases, you can't use gravity because of hills or valleys, or even just the way expansion goes, you can't always plan for the future. So a sewer may not be as deep as it needs to be at the beginning, so slowly as you add on, you run out of depth essentially. So in that case, you have to use a lift station, which is just as it sounds, you need to lift the water up, the sewage up, so that it can become a gravity sewer again. Usually, it goes into a sewer main and it flows to this lift station, and then it's raised and then it becomes gravity again. And the city has seven lift stations currently, and one of them being the one in front of the middle school, we refer to as the Marmack Lift Station. And that station serves the middle school as well as some properties on Stecker Lane. And it actually has a long force main where it pushes that sewage all the way to Division Road where it dumps into an existing gravity sewer there. The problem with lift stations are they're costly to build, they're costly to maintain, we have to physically go to each station, we go there five days a week, you know, check everything over, they're prone to clogging, the pumps wear out, they're just, they're high risk as far as, because of the problems, there's so many components to it that it becomes just costly to maintain, and we worry about sewer backup, stuff like that. So you never put a lift station unless you need it, and in our case, we're trying to abandon one. The reason we had a lift station before and we feel we don't need it now is development. At the time the station was built, the Richwood Lane, Woodside Drive, those streets, that infrastructure was not in place, and now it is in place, and it's provided a lower outlet to what was there, what's on Division Road, which was there when we needed the lift station. So that's the reason we have an option now, and the reason we're approaching the school now is because that station, Marmack, needs a significant amount of work, so essentially needs to be reconstructed. But because we have the option for a gravity sewer, we would like to put that money, that investment, instead of rebuilding a lift station that's a maintenance item to begin with, we would like to put that money towards a gravity sewer. Certainly, the construction of a gravity sewer, it would cost more upfront than the replacement cost of the lift stations, a little more, but in the long run, it will benefit the system and it will benefit cost-wise even for all the users. And there are other benefits, I'll let John talk about that, but as far as, again, upfront costs, it's slightly more for the gravity sewer, that would all be borne by the city, but in the long run, it would benefit the city and the system users as a whole. To do that, we, of course, that's why we're approaching the schools, we do need easement because there's no road right of way that we could utilize to get to where we're headed toward. So I guess if we, do we want to...
Did we go to the...
That there's a picture of the lift station in front of the middle school? So there would be some aesthetic benefits, if you will, eliminating lift station? But the, well, Brian's getting that up, oh, there it is. So that curve in the road up near the top, that's where the middle school is, right there, and that's where the lift station is. We would like to run straight south with a gravity sewer line, and then it would have to jog because there's a county drain there, based on the grades in the drain. To cross that, we would need to head over to the east a little bit, and then we would head south, where we would ultimately end up at Richwood Lane, where we connect it to the gravity sewer there. So, I mean, that's a kind of a broad overview. I could talk about this of all day because this is what I do, but it's kind of boring for everybody else. So if you have any questions for me in particular, otherwise John has more comments, I'm sure.
Does that lift station affect all of our schools or just the middle school?
Just the middle school. Thank you.
As Jim mentioned, he's been looking at the replacement of this lift station by the middle school for the last couple of years, knowing that the end of its useful life is coming sooner rather than later. And as he also mentioned, the actual cost to replace that lift station versus the cost of installing a gravity sewer system down this proposed easement is actually less to replace the lift station, however, looking at both the long and short-term costs and benefits, we feel it's worth the extra $50,000 or more to install this gravity system. As we talked with some of the school board members that were able to meet with us in May, essentially, there's an operations and maintenance cost benefit to the city, but there's also replacing this lift station with a gravity system has a benefit to the school in fewer potential service outages due to mechanical failures at the lift station. And I certainly won't go into details, but a change in kind of how things are marketed recently has impacted a lot of communities and a lot of lift stations. The flushable wipes that you often see advertised on TV or in stores are more commonly used today. Unfortunately, they often don't break down by the time they get to the lift station. This particular lift station here at the middle school, we've had to clean the pumps several times this year. We've had to go so far as to deliver flyers, kind of what you can and can't flush down a toilet, to residents on Stecker Lane, and so kind of the potential is there. Certainly, if the lift station fails, it's our responsibility to fix it, but that may cause the middle school to be closed. And, you know, even though it's only the one school, what do you do with sending one school home if the other two are okay? So I think there's an overall benefit there to the system. It's also kind of timing worked out for us. We have the need to replace the lift station due to its useful life coming to an end. In between where we need to go on Woodside there, Dian Lane, there's a potential property owner in between that's willing to work with the school, or work with the city. And then there's also a road contract that we have on one of our street projects that we've done in the last couple of years that's still open, and we could utilize that contract to do a change order and be able to have the contractor work on this in the winter months, this coming winter. The city does not envision any short-term cost to the school. Certainly, we're going to bear the cost of any engineering or legal costs to prepare any documents, and we also don't believe, from a long-term perspective, that you'll see any negative costs. The 25-foot easement along the side of your property line is generally an area where you're not going to build. If you look at like how close your middle school or Lee School are to the property lines, they're about 80 feet from the property lines, and you're generally not going to build a school right up into that 25-foot easement. So, you know, really, long-term, we don't see any cost to the schools either. The city and school have a long history of cooperation. We've been involved in several infrastructure projects together, programming projects, and most recently with the TV and Broadcast Media Arts Class, working together with Jason. And so we hope to continue that spirit of cooperation with this project. And I believe everyone has that letter that I sent to the school dated June 9th, and so I won't go into the details of all of the benefits and costs that I outlined in that letter, but we're certainly here willing to answer any questions you may have on that or the presentation tonight. And as kind of the two publicly funded entities here working within the city, we certainly feel that the benefits to replacing this lift station benefits both the school, the city, and our residents collectively more than any of the costs. And so again, we're here if you have any questions.
You said the winter project would affect any of the middle school activities that would happen?
No, we wouldn't abandon the sewer.
Yeah, the construction would be independent of any activities, there'd be no loss of service or no even loss of use really as the property's being used currently, aside from the sewer aspect of it.
So is that what you're saying? I mean, how would that work?
You would install the sewer first and then right at the end, make that connection at the end, and then abandon the lift station after the project is over. So you'd still maintain that lift station all the way while the sewer's being installed, and then at the end, transfer things over.
Field six there wouldn't be affected, I know it's not used for much, but that softball field, it looks like it gets tight to first baseline?
Yeah, with that distance, there's plenty of room in there to do the work.
Yeah. And by doing it in the winter, the nice thing about that is then you do all the restoration then, and come springtime, the fields are then available to use. So that kind of is a benefit to doing it over the winter versus in the summer when people are back there and now you have construction crews there.
How long would you expect that project to take time-wise?
I mean, we don't have a good estimate now, but, so I don't even want to throw anything out there, but I mean, it's a matter of probably a month is what I would, you know, or two, nothing, it's not like a year project or anything.
Well, John just didn't say that in the spring, those fields would be good.
And feel free to blame the city manager if we have problems. Certainly, yes. Give everyone my number and email.
Does it ease anything on the other two buildings? They'll still be completely separate?
Yeah, they'll still be completely separate.
Can I look at this? From the pump station down, is there anything west of the pump station that would need work this part where the road is at, or is it picking up really where the pump station isn't going south?
It's just, yeah, it's just picking up from the station, actually, yeah, going south.
So it's nothing on the road at all?
Correct. Now, there are a few cleanouts for that lift station north, you know, and I guess east of that driveway that stick up, we would certainly be abandoning those, but that's outside of the road. They're kind of in the sidewalk where those would be eliminated.
So those would be able to rid of as well?
But it wouldn't ever block that road potentially, the entrance into the...
Correct.
Okay. The work.
Is that it for your questions?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Ryan, do you have any? Anybody else?
No, I think I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very much. Then, would it be the idea of the board that, based on this presentation, do we want to move forward with Brian working with the city with respect to the easement in this presentation? Is that the direction we'd like to see him go?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then it's in your hands if there's...
I'll be in touch.
Just to clarify, I just want to clarify, that means at no cost to the city, right? Everyone is comfortable with that part?
No cost at all.
I mean, well, I mean, we're not taking money for it, is what I'm saying.
Well, we just said it's based on the presentation.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, just to make sure it was clarified.
And then, if there's something, I don't know, but it's in your hands now.
Well, I will work with John and their legal counsel to get all the descriptions for easements written and so forth, and if there's anything that has to be approved by the board, we'll get it approved, but otherwise, we're, we're...
Work up.
...to circus.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Oh, you're not going to stay till the end? All right, next, superintendent legislative update.
I do not have a whole update other than last week on the 21 superintendents in Compton County and our county superintendent, Mike DeValle, as well as our legislative liaison. Had a conference call to discuss the revenue sharing conference, where both houses agree on what they will go to ultimately the governor for approval. One of the things that is in the budget that we did not pay for, the $120, let me start there, that is in the budget that we are expecting, which is what we built the budget on, $120 per pupil increase, based on that blended count of 755 less FTEs. We anticipate, which was Vicki mentioned in the hearing at 6:30, we will receive about $94,000 in additional amperes of money. Right now, there are, there seems to be very little strings attached, but we were being dried against on that aspect. But what is new is, if you remember, in the governor's original proposal, he had put in there $50 per every high school FTE, which would equate to about $25,500 for us approximately. The consensus in whatever deals were made puts $25 per high school student. So the budget that will appear in the amended budget, roughly February for now, once we get all the FTEs done, will have an increased revenue of $12,233 that we're projecting with that estimated pupil count. I'd like to recommend to the board, as we go forward, once we approve it, we look at putting that liaison officer back in the budget, using that, those funds. Talking to Ms. Deschawn and Mr. Reinhardt, it is a very valued position and it does help us, and so, you know, we can look at using that. So at some point, that's the direction the board would like to go. I can work with Vicki before she leaves and Tammy as she comes on board and put that expense back in the budget and then bring it to you for the amendment and show up there. Other than that, just waiting for the governor's aide to sign the amendment off.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Next, items of interest from members of the board. Anyone?
Just want to thank everyone that the last couple weeks, or last week in particular, made the trek to Lansing to support the girls' softball team, the support that everything in this community gets, you know, ended the year great with a good showing in Lansing. It was a great atmosphere. But as always, our town really supports our arts and music and our athletics, and so thank you for that.
This is also the time of year, you know, when you look at a personnel report like we just had, that not only are teachers or staff members retiring, but they're also leaving to further, to go on to other professional opportunities. And so, we as a board don't ever get the, really, the opportunity to say thank you to those that have spent time here with our students here. And I think about Mike Murphy and all that he brought, has brought to Richmond over the years, and he will certainly be missed, and those are shoes that are going to be hard to fill. But for all those folks over the summer who move on and go someplace else, it's important for us to thank them for their time with our students.
Any else? Okay, moving on. Public comments. Portion of our meeting, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, they may do so. You can go up to the podium. There's a card if you would like to leave your name and phone number if you have a question that needs to be answered. It is not a question-and-answer time period with the board, but someone will get back to you, and you have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No one? Okay. Moving on to our action items. Approval of fiscal year 2017 general fund final budget and fiscal year 2018 general fund original budget.
I'm going to defer to Vicki if she's got any questions.
No, we've talked, we've talked at length about the original budget for 17, 18 school year. The only thing I wanted to mention in the final budget for 16, 17 is that hasn't, the bottom line hasn't changed much with that. What we did, we talked about before having some funds in the middle school budget that we are reallocating to some other expense items, some of our operations in other areas, so it's kind of shifted a little bit, but the bottom line has changed very little, so that was, there's nothing significant. that was, there's nothing significant to speak of.
So when you look at that amended budget that we did in February, it was $231,000 that we had, were taken from fund balance. The final amended budget is $232,000, so we're a thousand dollars different.
There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the final budget amendment for the 2016-17 general fund and the 2017-18 original budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Second.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris?
Yes.
Kyle?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
An aye vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, everyone's a comedian tonight, okay. Next, approval of fiscal year 2017 food service final budget and fiscal year 2018 food service original budget.
Okay, looking at the final budget for the food service, lunch sales were a little higher than expected in the, from the original budget, and instead of using some fund balance, we increased the fund balance by $8,193. And next year, we have on the expense side, two items in the capital outline that we're planning on purchasing. One is an oven for Lee Elementary, and possibly a vehicle for transporting food in the food service department. And, so, there also is a transfer out of food service to the general fund. Sometimes we, there's been years when we haven't taken any indirect costs out of food service, but this year, next year, we're planning on doing that. And that just kind of covers a percentage of what we spend through general fund to support the food service, like the payroll, the electricity, the custodial services that the general fund pays for, that the food service department uses it, uses, so about some. Those are highlight of the expenses that we're planning for next year.
Thank you. There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2016-17 final food service fund budget and 2017-18 original food service fund budget as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Is it always typical for the food service to have their own fund balance like that? I mean, because?
Yes. Because you would like them to be able to use that money for purchasing equipment, rather than going to general fund to buy those things. So it's nice to, we're only allowed, I believe, three months operating expenses to carry in that fund balance?
I was wondering about that, if there's a limit.
Yeah, but we, so we try to build it up, and there's freezers and things that are always.
Right, yeah, that's right.
Anybody else? Okay, I will do a roll call. Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
An aye vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of fiscal year 2017 debt fund final budget and fiscal year 2018 debt fund original budget.
There's no significant changes in what we need to, what we lobbied and what we paid out in the debt service fund. Over the next few years, we'll, like we talked during the budget hearing, we'll gradually be reducing the levy due to the increasing value of tax, or taxable value, and the refund in the last, other than that, there's no significant changes.
Sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2016-17 final debt fund budget and the 2017-18 original debt fund budget as presented in the attached documentation. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
An aye vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of state aid note, long cash flow borrowing.
Each year, we borrow from the Michigan Finance Authority funds to anticipate our shortfall in cash. As you know, we start our year in July, and we start paying, start accumulating bills, starting July 1, and we don't get any revenue for those bills from the state. You saw how much of the state revenue that we need to fund the district. So we don't get any until October 20, so that kind of gets us a slow start to the year as far as revenue coming in to support those expenses. So we anticipate that we will need to borrow $1 million, which is significantly, significantly less than last year, because I feel that the 24 pays that we've adopted in the new contract, that has helped spread the pay over more months than having two months of free pays, which significantly is a drain on the cash flow. So this will help, and maybe in time that it will be too significant, but no. So this year, we're down about $600,000 in loans tomorrow.
Wow, that's huge. Wow, that's great.
I would just like, as you see, if you borrow less money, you're paying less interest then. So I do want to thank the bargaining units of this organization, who all agreed to go to a 24 pay, because it has significantly reduced the amount that we're going to have to borrow to pay the interest. So we'll be able to start capitalizing on keeping that money in the classroom as much as possible.
There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the resolution, authorizing issuance of notes in anticipation of state school aid for $1 million through the Michigan Finance Authority State Aid Note Program as presented in the attached documentation. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Ryan?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
An aye vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of K-12 mathematics curriculum and instructional materials.
In May, you received a presentation from curriculum director Anthony Burksmeyer for materials for both the elementary, middle, and high school. The elementary materials will be supplemental and don't hit the board threshold amount, but the middle school and high school do. They would be, if you recall, the companies that we purchased them from agreed to allow us to make those payments over three fiscal years and no interest, so it allows us to do the K-12 program.
There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the K-12 mathematics curriculum and corresponding instructional materials for which funding from the 2017-18 general fund is authorized as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
An aye vote aye. Motion carries.
Next, approval of high school science curriculum and instructional materials.
At that same Board, KMA, we presented the provisions of the high school curriculum. If you recall, last year, we adopted a K-9 model, and as those students are moving up to 10th grade, there are resources that we need for those students entering into the next level of high school courses, which are reverb biology courses, so.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the high school science curriculum and corresponding instructional materials for which funding from the 2017-18 general fund is authorized as presented in the attached documentation. Second.
Is that Tracy?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
An aye vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of 2017-18 Student Athlete Code of Conduct Handbook. We had this presented to us two weeks ago, and Brian, I believe you showed us what we wanted.
There was a couple changes. I hope I got the counter what the board was looking for, and as well as some changes that are highlighted and yellowed in the attached documents from that presentation two weeks ago.
There's a sample resolution?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the proposed changes to the 2017-18 Student Athlete Code of Conduct Handbook as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of 2017-18 Athletic Coaches Handbook. Same thing?
Same thing. There's a couple, there's a deletion of a section that we requested the board.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the proposed changes to the 2017-18 Coaches Handbook as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of grading policy revisions.
This was presented at the last board meeting. Along with this would be revisions to the elementary report card. There were no changes based on the discussion of the board at the last meeting.
I motion to accept the recommendations of the superintendent and approve the 2017-18 grading policy revisions presented at the June 12, 2017 Board of Education meeting, and as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, second reading and approval of board policy. These are, we did the first readings two weeks ago of all of these policies here, so the motion would be to approve all of those from the first reading.
Correct, there's just that one on the wellness policy that the board asked about the snacks, so we removed that option. It's in our revision, I'm just trying to find it where, while prohibiting the use of snacks as a treat or so forth, it still allows teachers to do that.
I motion to, I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached board policies as presented on June 12, 2017, for a first reading, and June 26, 2017, for a second reading.
Support.
Kyle, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of exempt and non-union contracts. Brian?
In this packet, it talks about the various members in the organization that are considered exempt and non-union. Some of them are in central office, some of them are in maintenance. It also talks about our preschool, childcare, GSRP teachers, et cetera. And so there is a sample contract that we use for employees, there's a sample contract we use for GSRP aides or associate teachers, childcare and preschool aides, and then there's a sample contract we use for preschool teachers, et cetera.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the central office exempt and non-union contracts for the 2017-18.
Hold on, stop. Hi, he didn't. Yeah, I know, but. Yeah. I have a conflict of interest with a portion of this, so I'm requesting that we take out, we vote separately, potentially on the preschool aide, childcare aspect of things, because I have a relative who works in that area, and I declare the conflict of interest and have to abstain from that vote, so.
And rather than having to abstain from?
From the whole thing, can we separate it out somehow?
Sure. Sarah will absolutely do that.
What am I separating?
You're going to, you're going to make a motion to accept, approve the central office exempt and non-union contracts with the exception, not including childcare and preschool, and then we'll do a second motion.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the central office exempt and non-union contracts excluding the preschool?
Aids.
Aids.
And childcare.
And childcare. For the 2017-18 school year and corresponding salary or hourly rates as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Is Ryan? Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next one?
Yeah, you're in a roll, do the next one, just approving the.
Care in the preschool.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the preschool aides and childcare contracts for the 2017-18 school year and corresponding salary or hourly rates as presented in the attached documentation.
Second.
That was Kyle?
Yep.
Okay, that has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
I abstain.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, approval of 2017-18 rate of pay for substitutes.
This is, substitutes have been a challenge for districts across this state and through this county. We're moving to a new substitute system, we're moving to ASAP and a new system for substitutes, our company, Edge Staff. We felt this would be the right time to make adjustments to the rate of pay for substitute to be competitive. The, Edge Staff has a larger pool of substitutes that is available, but if our rate is still one of the lowest, more likely people are going to choose other districts than here. In the budget that you have, I did not move any money from substitute to paying staff there on a pretty, or a rate of pay where they have to teach on their prep, but what I'm anticipating is that be less, because we will have more subs, and we would just shift money during the amendment at that prime time. You'll see the rates of pay, you'll see some of these rates of pay have been in existence for four previous years, so we tried to make them competitive of neighboring districts, and as well as competitive of our own employees, we'll start looking at the rates of pay that they were making.
There's a sample resolution?
I motion to approve and accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2017-2018 new rates of pay for substitutes as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I'm glad that we are doing this. I think that this is a little overdue, and I think that it will make ease up our substitute opportunities.
It might ease up our staff to cover classes and that kind of stuff when we can't find subs.
Right.
It does, it does bring the situation where our tried and true employees are making the same amount as substitutes in some cases, and so, that can cause some resentment, I guess, does that make sense? If our tried and true, we show up every day, employees making the same as a substitute, that sometimes can cause a little bit of that. So just to consider that, I think it's great, I think it's fine, but just to consider that in the scheme of things, that that can cause a little something that doesn't feel right. Does that make sense? You know?
Anybody else? Okay, I will do a roll call. Ryan?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
An aye vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of 2017-18 Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution. This is what we have to do every single year to participate in athletics through MHSAA, so a sample resolution is in front of us?
I motion to approve and accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution for the 2017-18 school year as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Is that Chris?
Yes.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of 2017-18 breakfast and lunch prices.
This is particularly focusing on lunch prices. In the backup provided by Sue Bevins, there is a formula or calculation that the United States Department of Agriculture requires food service to follow, to establish the rates. We raised rates last year to the elementary, as the backup says. The recommendation in the backup by Mrs. Bevins is there's a couple options, or I think she offered six options to the board. Her recommendation, as well as mine, is option number five, just focusing on the middle school and high school. We believe that option will not require us to raise rates in 18, 19, so we have two consecutive years of rates. So the elementary rates would stay the same at $2.75 as they did last year, and we had to raise them previously. to raise them previously. Middle school rates would increase to $3., which are currently $2.75, so it'd be a $0.25 rate. High school would increase from $3. to $3.25, and the adult lunches, as you can see the formula at the bottom, there's a calculation to figure out what adult lunch prices would be, we'd be $4.25.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2017-18 food service lunch prices as presented in the documentation provided.
Support.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of 2017-18 field trip rates.
On page one of the board action sheet, the second paragraph says 2015 to '17. I apologize, it should be '16 to '17, my error. Three years ago, we were based on looking at our cost for transportation. When you look at the total cost, which is in your back-up there, everything including transportation, divided by the number of miles our buses run each year, three years ago, we raised, we changed the rate to go to a per-mile rate. It has been consistent for three school years, 14, 15, 15, 16, and 16, 17. Our costs are now beginning to exceed that rate, so it is my recommendation to, we change the rate that we charge for field trips from $4.05 to $4.15. I believe if we make that rate, we won't have to make another adjustment for at least another year or two out.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the 2017-18 field trip transportation rates for field trips at $4.15 per mile as presented in the documentation provided.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of contract with Metro Controls.
Last year, I brought this to the board, and it was very successful. This year, keeping our current, especially the investment that we just put in with the bond, those units maintain, filters change, all the stuff, grease and bearings working, as well as our existing stuff that did not get changed. So I'm requesting again that we continue the contract with Metro Controls. The addition for this year would be a support agreement, which basically is a once-a-month visit that they come out to the district. It also upgrades our system. If you don't have a support agreement and down the road you want to upgrade it, you have to pay for all the previous upgrades to that system. That's the way that software package works. So by having a support agreement, we always have the latest software that's out there. So, they have been, it also reduces our repair costs because we get a discount on the hourly billing rate on those repair costs if we have to have them.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the contract with Metro Controls Incorporated for which funding from the 1718 general fund is authorized as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Brian, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of contract with AIS, we have the operating equipment course.
This is the annual contract. It'd be built into the budget, the two courses, we have two two-hour block courses because of the numbers, so I would be entering into agreement like we've done in the past to have that course run and pay it over to AIS as authorized in the budget.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement with AIS for the 2017-18 school year for which funding from the 2017-18 general fund is authorized.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sarah.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of contract with the City of Richmond for television and broadcast media course.
This would also allow me to enter into agreement with the city to continue the TV production course that we started last year. This year, it's actually an increase in expense because we have a TV one and TV two course. It's been very successful, and the numbers are solid going into next year.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract for shared services with City of Richmond for television and broadcast media course for which funding from the 2017-18 general fund is authorized as presented in the attached documentation. All state requirements shall be met for FTE funding and CTE compliance.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Kyle.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of contract with Richmond Lennox Ambulatory Services for EMT course.
At the last board meeting, we talked about the enrollment of the EMT course. It's my recommendation that we just run the year two of this course, allow those students to finish out. The students that are in the program are, they want to go into EMT, they're dedicated, and look at beginning cycling year one, the following year, and if we can get two courses running, otherwise doing over a two-year period. So in the budget that you approved, it does have the cost for both years, in a year one and year two. The current number, there's some conflicts with scheduling, there's some AP courses and honors courses that would prohibit students to attend the EMT course, so just by the numbers, I would not, I'm not recommending running the year one course, but finish out year two and then come back next year and start year one again, and work on more marketing the program and targeting students that are really interested in EMT. I know I've talked to Memphis schools, they are interested. They just had to switch over their superintendent officially July 1, so there's a little hesitation on agreeing something right now, but they are definitely interested in the program. New Haven Community Schools is also interested once we, you know, work out the details with their program because they have a seven-period day through our six, so scheduling of the course is very challenging when you have a seven or a six-period day and then transportation. So I would recommend that we just run, operate year two, and then the reduction in the budget would appear in the amendment come due in February, January, February.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to continue the contract for shared services with Richmond Lennox Ambulatory Services for Emergency Medical Technician Course for which funding from the 2017-18 general fund is authorized as presented in the attached documentation. All state requirements shall be met for the FTE funding and CTE compliance.
Support.
Kyle, was that you?
Yes.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Brian, I had a question. At the last meeting, Deb was going to get back with you, she was going to talk to those four students who were interested and see how serious they were and that they knew how rigorous that was and that they were all juniors. We kind of thought we would run that first year. Did we find out?
When we looked at those students, two of them have conflicts in their schedule to get theirs, an AP and an honors, and forgive me, I don't, I might have to shoot. And so they'd be only two lucky, the other two, they know direct that this is what I want, they think this is what they want to do. The two that are in year one going to year two are definitely ones that are seeking to get the, finish the test.
Yeah.
And go on.
So right now, we have two juniors who are interested.
Correct.
That really are kind of out because next year, they can't just do the first year. I mean, they could, but it doesn't get them to take the test.
We still have the agreement with the PanCal Center, which allows them to go to the health service courses at PanCal, you know, obviously if it fits in their schedule, but as an option, it is no, that is nothing like the EMT program.
Yeah.
They're two very different courses, but if they're interested in going into health services, we can look at that as an option for them.
Okay.
And how, how much of a reduction are we expecting?
It is about $10,000 reduction. Because your prep hour and your, your prep time and that, if that still exists, you're just adding a smaller, almost a third top.
I think it was $10,000.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Well, you don't think that holding off a year will deter Richmond Lennox EMS from wanting to work with us?
I don't think so because I'm talking with Jeff White, as well as the instructor, they like to kind of redesign some of the stuff to, to market it to students differently and help them understand what that program is.
Okay.
The first time going through, there's always those 2020s hindsight things that we learn. I think there's some approaches we would do differently.
So this might give them time.
Correct.
Okay.
Also, I think it gives us a better opportunity to do use of other partnerships with local school districts around.
Yeah.
It's very interested.
Market it for what it really is.
Right.
And there's a, you know, even though the school district to our class has a health program, it's not the EMT program that we have.
Okay.
So it's something that we could market to those students to, see if we can draw some students that are more interested in going through.
Right. Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, we'll do a roll call. Tracy.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of contract with Rich, regional, regional youth initiative.
This past year, we had a, what I believe is a very successful K-12 theater arts program. We've learned a lot, and we have some improvements that we're going to be making in it. You saw a presentation a couple weeks ago from some of the students who really spoke on what this has done, especially at the elementary. You know, it's no secret what performing arts does for students in building their self-confidence and speaking skills, and that does translate into the classroom. So I'm recommending we continue the partnership with the Regional Youth Initiative, and then allow me to work out the details in terms of the dates and times and so forth, but continue that partnership as we did this past school year.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and authorize the superintendent to continue his contract with the Regional Youth Initiative, Inc., for which funding from the 2017-18 general fund is authorized as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those, oh, nope, I'm going to do a roll call. Ryan.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of master agreement between Richmond Community Schools and Educational Paraprofessionals, Teamsters, State County, and Municipal Workers Local 214.
The educational paraprofessionals, which encompass the media parapros, the special education parapros, as well as Title I parapros, have agreed to a wage and benefit extension for two years on the contract for the 1718 and 1819 school year. In the contract, you'll see some of the compensation is contingent on student enrollment. They do have some defined automatics, but to get some additional, if our numbers or students are there, they have agreed to get an additional percentage second semester. So this would, their contract then would expire in June of '19, so we'd have the wages and benefits for two consecutive years to sign.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the master agreement between Richmond Community Schools, Board of Education, and Educational Paraprofessional Teamsters, State, County, and Municipal Workers Local 214 for a wage and benefit opener effective 2017-18 and 2018-19 school years.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Other than thank you, Brian, and thank you to the parapros for settling their contract. Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of food service vehicle purchase.
In your back-up, there is a information about purchasing the van for food service. Oftentimes, given the size of our district, we only qualify for a one-site delivery, and so it's typically done at the middle school or the high school, and then we use a van that transports that food to the other two schools. The current van that we have, it died. It was purchased several years ago as a used vehicle. Doing some investigation with other districts, because they've never purchased a vehicle as a school. There is a website that school districts belong to, it's called MyDeals, it's a good source of bid pricing. You'll see in your pack-up, there are several models of a carrier van or cargo van that we are looking at. What I'm asking for is the board to authorize an up to a dollar amount. This money would be taken from the fund balance of the food service account, not the general fund, so we could be working July and have the van here before August and deliveries are made.
I motion to approve and accept the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the purchase of a food service vehicle not to exceed $25,000 as listed in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Tracy.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Kyle.
Yes.
Ryan.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. And we are adjourned at 7:58.